I would advise you to get the flag of the United States of America and as to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion called to order. Let's see, when, not present, I'll go to item four.
I'll make a motion to recess from this meeting and open the salary board.
I'll second that, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
On the salary board. Salary board called to order. June 24th.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 24th salary board. I'll second that.
Motion by Treasury Benedict, second by Commissioner Warren to approve the item three, the amendments to the June 24th salary board. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four.
Make a motion to approve item number four is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to eliminate the full-time non-union position of Assistant Chief Assessor in the Assessment Office. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None.
And five.
I'll make a motion to create the full-time non-union position of Director of Assessment in the Assessment Office at the salary of $39,500, so minimum of 40 hours a week, benefits according to government mandated requirements effective July 22nd, 2015, for the recommendation of RS-SCAD asking Chief Director.
I'll second that. Any questions or comments? Yes.
Why are you doing this? Like, whose position is being changed? Full-time, non-union director. Who is the director? Is the same person you're talking about? Are you just changing?
Yeah, it'll show up in the regular commissioners meeting. The individual.
So, is that going to be the base salary for the position? Or is that going to be the salary plus?
That's the current salary right now.
So, would it reflect, like, her years of?
Yes.
Well, I think that should be added to the motion, um, that the salary is the current salary, just as we did for Sharon in the Treasurer's office.
It is the current salary. I'll agree to that change. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None.
Any public comment on the salary board? Yes.
When you eliminated the full-time position of Assistant Chief Assessor, who is that? Who's the assistant that you eliminated?
That was Mary Nolte.
Mary who?
Nolte.
Nolte? And is she back in another position?
She's taking position number five.
Number five?
Okay, item six.
I'll make a motion to close salary board my turn to the commissioners meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Item five in the commissioners meeting is tabled. Item six.
I'll make a motion to approve item number six is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item six, the ratify and approve the cash disbursements, electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Make a motion to approve item number seven is listed on your agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item seven on the agenda, ratify and approve the stated semi-request and payment per request. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I remember.
I'll make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda, but I just questioned the Mashopan address. Is it actually Mashopan or is it Soscani County? Is it a township in?
It's in your staff paper, so. Like Auburn Township would have a Mashopan address.
I don't see any other questions or comments? All in favor? Yes, fair enough.
Do corrections officers have to live in our county? Or they can be out of the county?
No, they can be out of the county. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item nine on the agenda to ratify the hiring of Patricia Lewis of Brockney to the Corrections Office. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number 10 is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item 10, ratify the hiring of Jonathan Zillwitz of Brockney, the open corrections officer position. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 11 is listed on your agenda.
Second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item 11 on the agenda, the hiring, ratify the hiring of Lucas Estes of Montrose to the part-time position of corrections officer. Questions or comments? Yes.
Okay, I see here, four, one, two, three, four. That means new people that are being hired for corrections officers. Now, this has been going on for, it seems like, months. Why is there continue, it seems like for several months, new hirings? What is going on in the jail?
They're trying to get to full staff. They're not full staff, yeah.
And what's full staff? How many would they need?
I can't remember exactly. I think it's 26 or 30.
For the whole jail? 26 or 30 for the whole thing?
Yeah.
And you're having, so are you having trouble getting people, it sounds like? I mean, you've been working on trying to get full staff for how long?
You always have turnover, especially in the jail or 911, people that take positions and realize it's not what they're really looking for, and so they leave, and you always have a turnover in those positions because of the hours and their seven-day-a-week, 24-hour jobs.
So, you mean they're working seven days a week, these people?
No.
No? What do they work? Five days a week? What's their job usually?
Well, they normally work five days a week, yeah.
And then other people fill in for the other days?
Right.
So, that's their, so, and what about the price per hour? Is that a turnoff to people? They want more money, maybe?
No. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number 12 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve Amanda Adams of Mashopan to the full-time 911 dispatcher training position, $12 per hour, 40 hours a week. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 13 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item 13 on the agenda, ratify the transfer of Michael Torres from Edwardsville to the open full-time position of corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 14 is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item 14 on the agenda, to ratify the transfer of Miranda McMain of Alstet to the open full-time position of corrections officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 15 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item 15 on the agenda, to ratify termination of Jamie Uzar from the jail for the recommendation of the warrant. Questions or comments?
Do you know how long she lasted?
Aye. All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number 16, a transfer of Mary Nolte from Assistant Chief Assessor to the full-time, non-union position of Director of Assessment, effective July 22nd, at a salary, at the current salary of $39,500, minimum of 40 hours a week, for the recommendation of RS-SCAD asking Chief Director.
I'll second that. Questions or comments? Yes.
What's the difference between Director of Assessment and the Chief Assessor's position?
The Chief Assessor handles the, will be handling all the technical stuff for the assessment. The Director will handle all the personnel and operations. Yes.
Now, if she left Assistant, the Assistant Chief Assessor position, who's going to replace that position?
Nobody will, not from that position. We eliminated that one.
You eliminated that one?
Yes. I hired anybody that shouldn't. All in favor?
Um.
Seventeen.
Make a motion to approve item number 17, just to add, to acknowledge the transfer.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve the, and acknowledge the transfer of Courtney Canfield from the intake officer in domestic relations to the full-time union position of Second Deputy Patronator. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Seventeen.
Make a motion to approve item number 18 is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item 18 on the agenda, to exonerate the Tax Plan Bureau from collecting taxes on the following, per the recommendation of Kathy Rannick, Tax Plan Director, Borough Parcel, and just the one person. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 19 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item 19 on the agenda, deciding the manner of understanding and agreement between Suscano County Schools and the Suscano County Commissioners' Juvenile Probation Department. Questions or comments? Yes.
How's the population and children that are considered juveniles, how is that doing? I mean, are the rates the same as far as children who are in that program in the past couple of years?
Pretty much stays pretty level.
Pretty stable?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Seventeen.
Make a motion to approve item number 20 is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve the Lackey and Suscano County Drug and Alcohol officials in your contracts as so stated. Questions or comments?
There are three pages of providers.
Yep.
This is a menu, isn't it? You only get to use the ones you need, or?
Yeah, they only use the ones they need. A lot of these we won't use, but they're there in case they do need them, so they just use them as required.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
And how is the rate of people in the alcohol and drug program this year as opposed to the year before, the past two, three years? Is that increasing at all, or kind of stable?
Yeah, it's consistent from what it's done.
So, meaning that's similar?
Similar, yes. All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number 21 is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item 21 on the agenda, purchase service agreements between Suscano County and the services for children and youth with Fleetwood for a term of July 1st through June 30th, and between Suscano County Children Youth and the Diocese of Scranton, and also with the Justice Works Youth Care. And, two other ones, we also have the Justice Works Care in Pittsburgh, and the Family United Network Incorporated, Munt CPA, and Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 22.
I make a motion to approve item number 22 is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Hall to approve item 22 on the agenda, to reappoint the following to the Suscano County Tourism Committee for a term of May 8th, 2015 through May 7th, 2016, Mr. Kim Ross, Michelle Schusenek, Andy Aldrich, Greg Confer, and Alan Moronowitz. Questions or comments? Yes.
Now, are these the same people we had last year?
I think there's one new, one new one on this one.
Alan is new. Alan is new, so he's not a reappointment?
The rest are reappointments.
So, can your, your motion be reworded because they're not all reappointments? One is a new person?
I'll amend my motion to say to appoint or reappoint the following.
I'll second that.
And then what does second commissioner mean on that line there?
Whoever seconds it. Really?
What does that mean, second commissioner?
Whoever seconds the motion.
Oh, is that what that means?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to open a sealed bid for the HVAC maintenance contract, which will be on the Chief's Office by 3:00 PM, Tuesday, July 21st, 2015.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
This is for H.B. Lyons.
And what is HVAC? What is that? What is this?
HVAC, heating, cooling, and air conditioning. Okay, H.B. Lyons, let's see. Total base bid price is $270,444. This one is from PLD. This one is $202,000 for the three-year contract, labor rate of $85 an hour. This is for Clear Company. Clear Company is $609,000.
Wow.
For three years.
Big difference, huh?
Could you read the labor rate for that place?
That one was, uh, goes some, regular is $98 an hour. Johnson Controls. Labor rate goes from $119 year one to $127 year three.
So, it's a three-year contract, too?
Yeah. Three-year contract. This one, 537,780, labor rate of 103 to 109. All right, this will be turned over to our solicitor and engineer for review, and be awarded a fat.
Can you explain anything about, you know, what this, these contracts actually cover?
Yeah, it's the maintenance and service of all the heating and cooling systems in the facility.
So, you're saying it can go, the contracts, one contract says $168,000, and it goes all the way up to $609,000? Big difference. And then when they say an hourly rate, is that in addition to the whatever they charge?
Like I said, they got to go to the solicitor and go to the engineer for review, then once they're all reviewed, make sure they're all bidding on the exact same thing, and they all say the exact same thing, then they'll come back with the recommendations from the engineering and the solicitor.
Can you say what the last contract cost that you've been under?
We didn't have one.
Oh, this is for the new stuff?
Right.
All the new stuff you had?
Right. Any other public comment?
I have a question.
Yes.
The motions for Mary Nolte are saying that her current salary is $39,000?
$39,500.
Well, actually, you're setting a salary for her. She's getting raised because her, her current salary is $36,720.
Well, the current salary of, after the salary board is $39,500. You set the salary at $39,500 in the salary board.
$39,500? Because I only heard $39,500.
Yeah, it's $39,500.
So, she's getting raised, basically.
Yes. Any other question? Yes.
Yes, I'd like to compliment Commissioners Hall and Warren for the fine job they've done in dealing with PennDOT. At the meeting on the 10th of the month, I think we finally got our representatives and PennDOT's attention. Whether anything positive will come, I don't know, but I think we've got their attention. And I appreciate the job in two days in accomplishing that.
I just have to keep the pressure on. I know that what they've been doing is not acceptable, and they have to do a better job.
On that subject, I second that. Thank you. But, here's a point of clarification. Is PennDOT allowed to issue a heavy haul permit on a Sunday?
I'm not sure on the heavy hauls right now in Pennsylvania, if they can haul on Sundays or not. I know they can haul up to a certain weight, but I don't know how heavy they can go.
Okay. I was curious because a Sunday in June, midday, there was the heavy haul going down 706, and then around the same time on Monday, it was there as well.
Yeah.
And, uh, I wasn't clear on that. I thought they were restricted.
Well, they do restrict some, like, the ones, the ones you usually won't see on the weekends will be the ones that have to be escorted by the state police because of their weight and size. But I do believe they do, do the other heavy hauls, they do allow them to work on, depending on where they're traveling and what they're doing, they may allow them to work on the weekends.
Thank you. And, one other question. There was, the commissioners granted permission for an event to play place on the green this weekend, which was very nice, and thank you for permitting that. But I just wonder, the policy, do you let the borough police know when you, because I, I don't believe they were informed?
I think they were. And I think that we notified agencies that, that that was going to go on. And I think also the people that were running that event were notifying people, too.
The Pete Montrose police?
They were there.
Well, on Monday, I stopped, and I was told that they weren't notified.
Well, they were there. They circled the green three times.
Good.
They were there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Oh, me?
You.
All right. So, I think it was our June 25th meeting, your June 25th meeting, when you set a policy not allowing outside groups to, to use the courthouse, say, after hours, or?
Mm-hmm.
But on July 4th, I believe, the KLR hosted race registrations in the courthouse.
That would be news to me. And why that occurred, I have no idea, but I will find out.
I'm just saying, your, your policy, I believe, was already violated.
Wouldn't be the first one.
It would be the last.
Wouldn't be the last one.
I told you when you said it that I was going to keep an eye on it, and there's my eye.
Any others? Yes.
I'm going to go again. All right, so, I believe the, a grant has been, been cut, lost for the victim witness coordinator in the District Attorney's Office.
Say what again?
That, a grant that helped supplement the salary of the victim witness coordinator was, you know, has been lost, and?
Well, not lost.
Or cut, or?
No, not, I don't think, cut.
All right.
So, much is allocated per year, and at the, because of the way the union set that position up, that person gets paid the scale of, of that grant until the grant expires, and then goes to the rate that the individual's supposed to be at.
So, that's going to lead to a deep decrease in, in the salary for that position, though?
Oh, absolutely.
And there's no way through, through county funds that we can?
No, because we have to pay according to the union contract. The union contract says that that person gets paid the same as all the other union employees.
And while we're talking about union contracts, we're starting our COs, and I know they're in a different bargaining unit, but our, our COs start at 1303, and yet, and again, basically, there's no experience required for that position.
Right.
But we have our deputies who are hired at, like, it's a base of 11-something an hour, who have to have certifications, who have to be at 120 certified, who, you know, who are carrying weapons and are going out to potentially dangerous situations, and yet, there's no way we can adjust?
Well, unfortunately, all the union contracts have a Me Too clause in them, and the union will now allow us to adjust salaries without giving everybody an automatic salary increase, too. So, if we give all the deputies a $2 an hour increase, then every employee that's in the union is entitled to a $2 an hour increase.
In that bargaining unit?
Uh, in all the bargaining units. All the bargaining units have that clause in there. Now, I don't know what was bang individual on the county side, agreed to let that get put in contract, but obviously didn't know anything about negotiations or union contracts.
When, you know, when will you be, when is the deputy's contract? Is that the court, court bargaining?
No, I think they're out in 2019, I guess, I remember this.
So, until then, we have to keep them extremely low?
Well, unless, you know, the employees decide to do something different, or as far as their agreement with the union, or they convince their union leadership that they need to do something different. Yes.
Did you say whiz-bang?
I said whiz-bang.
Just wanted to be clear.
By the same whiz-bang guy that signed an agreement back 60 years ago about county should own three dams here, and should only cost us $400 a year to fix them, and it cost us over $100,000 a year. The same whiz-bang that signed up with the PennDOT and said, "We'll take 32 bridges back, because we're nice people, and we need to have 32 bridges in this county." So, again, people make decisions, and they don't really think of how it's going to affect five or 10 years down the road, and that's my biggest issue with this place.
Thank you.
So, yes.
I was wondering why, number five, the minutes were tabled for the approval?
Because Mr. Jean Greco's not here, and Commissioner Warren was not at the last meeting, and I can't pass the minutes by myself.
Okay. And then another question is, how do you feel the job is being done right now? You were hoping, or you think that the job could be better as far as the roads, the way they're, they're surfaced and fixed? What would you like to see better?
Well, in our discussion we had, we found out the quality of work needs to improve. The way they're putting coal patch on the road, they can't just dump it in a pile and wait for a car to run it over and back it down. They need to take a little hand stamp on the tamer out there and tamp it down. So, reduce the amount of material they use, which means they'll be able to do twice as much. Roads that have potholes in them, that they've got to get off their, their, fixing every other pothole, and fix every pothole. You know, can't fix three in a row, and then leave two, and then fix three more. So, you know, things like that, quality of work, workmanship, bridge decks, there's problems with, they're addressing that with contractors, trying to figure out what they're going to do to repair those bridge decks that are already falling apart that were just done a year ago.
And then how do you feel the job is done right now for 706, the new resurfacing? Do you feel it's done well, or is it going to break down again a year from now?
Well, 706, you know, there was no, no base, there was some base repair done to it on the edges, but it's the same problem. If I went to Bradford County, they would have milled the whole road down and got down to the base something that's halfway decent and redone the road. But in Suscano County, we just keep adding more, blacked up, on top of blacked up, on top of blacked up. blacktop. And yeah, you'll get a few good years out of it. You know, Route 11 from Kingsley to, to the county line going south was done a few years ago and they didn't mill that down and, you know, that's already cracking and heaving apart and everything else. So, you know, it'll bind a few years, but with the traffic on 706 and, and the weather conditions, they still haven't done anything with the drainage issues on the side of the, on the upward side of the, of the road. So all the water's still going to run out into the road and underneath the blacktop and still the frost is going to get in and heat it. So it'll last for a little while.
So in your opinion, the specs are not adequate and why is there a difference between Bradford and Susquehanna County?
We keep asking that same question.
Who do we call?
You can call the Director of Transportation in Harrisburg, see if you can get an answer from them.
But it's clear that there is a difference in the specs between?
And, and the reason they say that is, you know, listen, we don't have enough money to take and do the roads the way they probably would, should be done to make them last a long time. So we do the best we can, what we have to work with as far as money. Now their excuse is that in the, in the latest passage of the, of the gas tax increase that our legislators did was that they have put all this new money into Department of Transportation for, for roads, but it's all for new roads, not for maintenance of old roads. So now we sit here with the state with the highest gas tax and we get no additional money for the maintenance on the roads. In addition to that, which compounds it, is the federal government who's been, I don't even know if they're even still in Washington or if they've all gone out to sea someplace, but, you know, their continuing resolutions that they've done for the last who knows how many years and can't seem to do their jobs, has cut the funding on state highway programs to our colonies, which means now the state has to make up for that, which means we're even losing even more. So.
I think the most truthful thing George Roberts said at the meeting was, "We've been putting Band-Aids on for years and now they're all falling off."
There you go.
And who is George Roberts? What's his position?
He's the Director of, of PennDOT, out of Dunmore. Handles this region. Yes.
When they're down there waiting on a lot of these roads, they're in the woods, they want them, there was no base put under them, I know. And because I, I cried about it, but it was like talking to wind because I said they're going home.
Right.
And that's why there's a lot of the problems on the side of the road.
That's why the edges of the roads are always the part where the roads fall apart.
They're waiting, they didn't put no base in.
Right.
Another thing, you hear me ask George, the inspectors are supposed to be riding around their vehicles to help them job.
Well, listen, I, you know, I have to agree and I can't remember if it was Bill or somebody else at the meeting said, you know, you got to give them a lot of credit though. You know, this new road they put in over on 171 going over to Susquehanna with that in front of the Mormons facility.
Tony said that.
You know, this is a brand new road they put in and they managed to take and get this road so it matches a road that's been in for 25 years. It's a roller coaster, roughest road I've been on.
We've been there for something like.
Yeah. So I mean, I give them credit. They were able to make a road that looked 25 years old, so.
I do believe on the 706 Betterment portion, 706 Betterment Project portion, that Leeward has a five-year bond from the date they finish to, to maintain the road for that time period.
Right.
So at least, I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what Pennsy has on there.
Right. I'm not sure what Pennsy has, but on some of the new bridges, on the rapid bridge replacement program, on some of the new bridges, the contractors maintain them for like five years before they turn them back over to the state. I know that.
Just spent a lot of time talking to Leeward people since they're out.
But yeah, I got to remember too that, you know, there's two projects that were on the table, which hopefully we've got to stop to now. One was 706 going from, from Rush down to the county line to do that five mile stretch. They were going to go in and buy some homes, straighten the road out a little bit. They were going to spend $27.5 million to do that. And I said, "Well, before you spend that $27.5 million on that road, why don't you spend that money on all the other roads that are falling apart that we can't even drive on and maybe just blacktop that road for now instead of spending all that money trying to straighten it out and make it a straighter route." 706, and I don't know if it's still on the drawing boards or not, I think they've got it off right now. 706 coming out of New Moford, they were looking to make it three lanes coming up through there.
Right, there's going to be a passing lane that was on the?
And I can't imagine that's not going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars.
Yes, and that, that one was going to require property, you know, taking a property and, and lots of, and?
So again, instead of spending all that money, let's, we have enough money to repay all the roads.
I went to a meeting on that, like 10 years ago now.
Right.
But so?
But the Gibson exit, that's on the table right now to get redone.
Right.
And now I find out that the exit in Great Bend there, 60, well, it used to be 68, it's 238.
238.
Yeah. Now they're looking at redoing the off ramps there and buying a bunch of property and, and doing stuff there. So, you know, my, my main issue is I understand that they want to try to straighten out the paths, make it straighter roads, but let's fix all the roads that are bad first before we start investing all that money into something else.
I haven't been on the Brushville Road since this spring, but there was an area that was complete dirt. I went from pavement to dirt.
Well, they actually did a decent job on that now.
Like I haven't, I didn't bother going back.
Except when you get almost into Susquehanna, they stopped about maybe?
There was, yeah, another place on 92.
Yeah, they stopped maybe about 300 yards from Susquehanna and it's, it's a disaster.
Yes, yeah.
Anything else?
Special West Main, that's?
I've been asking about the water testing results for the jail and I've only gotten the results that show the chlorine or the levels of?
Maggie's got the other ones. Jen, you give her the other reports that we had?
So I was looking for the reports that show whatever DEP has been doing or is requiring for the testing.
Are there water test reports?
Yes, I emailed all of those to you yesterday.
Oh, my, my whole system went down yesterday.
Okay, I have the meeting, I will get you a copy.
Okay. So you have DEP results of testing?
I have testing results, yes, great.
That show heavy metals or whatever? Do you know, does, does the DEP actually test that at the jail?
No, we test it in compliance with DEP and we file our reports with DEP.
And do you know how often you do that? Is it once a year?
Yeah, there's a schedule. I don't know it off the top of my head.
And then were you able to find out whether the super fund status of the former Bendix property, has that been lifted that it's no longer super fund? Have they meddled the requirements?
No, it's still on the super fund site, but any property that gets on the super fund site anyway. But that site through remediation and, and my understanding through the federal government and through the agencies is that, you know, if it wasn't on the super fund site, if it was on the, on Terminus listings, it would already be cleared up, I know. So it's just a lot of red tape to try and get cleared up and taken care of.
So as far as you understand, the remediation is done? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the remediation as far as being able to use the, use the land, the only thing you can't do down there is use the drinking water out of the ground.
So you can use the land, but you can't use the water? So you can't put in a water well?
No.
And use the water? And then were you able to find out what's going on with the 29 homes in that area also that they can't, can they or cannot use, not use their water?
I have no idea.
So are you going to eventually get like some kind of paperwork to show that that's the case? What you just stated, so you have it on, actually in writing?
I don't do it. I'm not doing anything down there. That's all private individuals and companies and corporations that are doing that work, so it's got nothing to do with us.
Do you know who we can contact for the super fund letters for that? If we want to get a copy? That the remediation is?
They're all on you well and they're the ones that own the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Very adjourned. Thank you for coming.
What about Frymore? Frymore's still a site, right? Being top stuff Frymore. They were, they were top stuff. Hey guys.